...planning board meeting of whatever it is, seven twenty, uh, seven, two twenty-seven, twenty. Have you all seen the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have, are there any corrections, additions or omissions? Hearing them, last motion to accept three minutes says. Do you have them?
I'll make a motion to accept the February twenty, twentieth, twenty, twenty minutes.
Second.
All in favor? You're right here. We're going to, um, I will say now that the meeting has started that I did find out where Granny Smith, uh, Granny Smith, Cranny Rose Dog Rescue, which is a companion in me called, is in Ashford, Connecticut. It's, it's a good, um, three hours from here. But if you do look online, you get to see a lot of pictures and it is everything that they said it is. So it's just another piece of information to file.
That's open all year too down there, right?
Yeah, and they'll go by appointments. It's, it's a 24/7 operation. And, um, they do dog training for people who have dogs. They do, which I thought was kind of cute, is they do children training for people who want to get dogs and have children so that, you know, it's an educational aspect to it. But just for just another bit of information to, when we get into that, you can have go online and it's companion and, you know, in Connecticut, northern Connecticut, so it's pretty easy to get to.
How you spell it, huh?
Ashford?
Yeah.
The Ash?
A-S-H. I don't know if I've got it right, or, or.
We can get it out of the meeting.
Yeah. But they do tours and five appointments on Saturday, so I thought I would know. We're going to go into discussing our proposed zoning ordinance changes. And since we have a few people here, I will just let you know that we can only make recommendations. We go through, we see things that may be in one of our books, that either being the zoning laws or subdivision laws, the, anyone, those books have been voted on by the town and they become the law of the town. So we can make recommendations. We may find something in one of our books that's been there since 1977 and totally without any kind of warrant. So we go through it on a regular basis and we prepare things to go upstairs to the selectmen. And they may come back to us, they may go back upstairs again, and they finally go on the warrant for the community and the municipality to vote on. So you have that. And Ken, please, if you would.
I think we'll go through on the way that seems the best way to put it onto the warrant. So first one would be timber harvesting. This is our second year to try to remove as much as we can and put it into the state hands. Uh, there were some staff changes up there and from last year to this year, they made these notations that they'd like to see this. So we're pulling out the forest management activities, silviculture, and pulling that out of the land use chat. We'll put reserved in there to hold that, that east spot so we don't have to change and move everything there. It's pulling out the permitted use and just putting NA in there just so it's not a blank area. And then pulling that definition out of the ordinance as well. And hopefully that'll put us in with compliance with the state and put them in charge of the timber harvesting operations. And I don't think there is any, any changes since the last time we've looked at that.
Since that work, except the last workshop, everybody is in agreement, this is what we, and it does keep us in compliance with the state, the state says.
So we're working through this, this meeting here and then go for public hearing on the 12th of March. The next number two I had was storage buildings. These would be the mini storage type structures. We've had a couple of calls on them over the past few years. We do have a few in town and we've kind of just tried to connect dots to make them as a, a permitted use. And I think both the ones we've had were, were really here prior to the multiple districts in town. We used to just have general perp issue, land and api, and now we've got village, transition, rural, critical rural, commercially B and C, mixed use, which we're just trying to clear that. So the storage buildings, 5,000 square feet per, per structure. Oddly enough, we had some training Wednesday, storage buildings came up and it was with the state fire marshal's office, the leading cause of fires. And that's one of our biggest concerns with these units is you don't know what's in them.
Exactly.
Um, so in the past, we've had the, the owners get the contracts and the contracts are pretty specific, that disconnect the batteries, drain the fuels and that types of stuff. The leading cause of fires in these are from cooking. People living in them.
No, a hundred dollars a month.
I'm golden. I've been eyeing one of them.
But, um.
I want the electricity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. nicer than the B and B. Cause you bring your sled right in with you.
Exactly.
But it really is a sad state of affairs, people are living in them.
So we've talked about it prior. We do have one in the village. There really probably isn't any other places another one could go, but they've never talked about expansion. Uh, conditional use and transition rural, not allowed in critical rural, thinking critical rural is the rural character of the town.
Correct.
Um, and I'm thinking still their conditional uses versus site plan. Uh, conditional use in commercial A, B, C, mixed use, not allowed in resource protection shawland, philosophy, and conditional use in the aquifer overland. So then we added, since you guys looked at it, the five, so wherever you see an arrow, there's been a change since you guys looked at it. And we just put in the words per building. So if they have three units, they could be 15,000 square feet. What's going to limit them would be the 20% lot coverage on the buildings. Um, so we changed per building in that. And the definition, I think the definition you guys had before, it just cleans it up pretty good that 5,000 square feet total floor area per building for lease rent, variable points of time, so. And then basically we just had to change the letters, struck up the letter and added one where we were expanding a line item in there.
Kenny, one, one building might consist of 50 units. Each use of the unit is considered a building, right?
That would be the structure. So 50 by 100?
Yeah, I mean whatever, I mean you could have, you could have 50 units in one building.
Standards usually 33, 44, in that range there by one of, there's a couple of different ways you get it depending on how they order them and they come multiple different sizes. A lot of them have a caretaker on, on staff in some of the larger ones. Uh, we've had some inquiries in the mixed use area, in the rural area. Neither one of them were talking caretakers, but I've seen them in the larger ones.
And in some of the franchise ones, there was one franchise, Uncle Bob.
Yeah.
And that person was there and actually had a, an apartment kind of thing built.
Oh, you see the whole place.
And they were there, that was, that was their job, place to live and, and a paycheck and that was there. That was, yeah, Uncle Bob's, it was a franchise.
I mean, that's a pretty big building.
Yeah.
You know, if you had 10 foot square units, you're talking 50 units.
Right.
5,000 square feet.
Probably 150 up one side, 50 down the other.
No.
No.
10, 10 by 10 is 100, so that'd be 50 buildings, probably 50 units. That's pretty good size stores building regardless. I realize the hundreds would be 10 by 10.
Yeah, yeah. Depends, they're a mixed unit, they'll fit the criteria for it.
They're expanding, um, size and whatever the rental fee is.
But that limits it down. If there is a fire, at least you're sure compartmentizing them into small enough so it's, so it's a deal. No issues with that, that looks good.
I'm fine. If somebody wanted to create a larger one, would we put up their site plan review or just say you can do that?
I think as in a, in a larger building.
Well, I guess you have. Right here you've got, you just haven't made multiple buildings on the same site, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's usually what we're seeing. And then you'll have the space and the driveways and usually it's the.
But then the coverage of the lot size will fall in.
Right, and usually it's the grading. The building too big, you'd be looking for 200 feet of flat land. It's the sloping that, that gets it snarble. Usually a DEP will tell you, if you ever want to see filled wetlands, just look for one of these, that's where they are, missing the floor.
Yeah.
Good neighbor policy, this one's changed a little bit since you guys saw it. We were thinking of pulling the whole thing out, but instead we're thinking of moving 511, good neighbor, into just this site.
If you want to use sign, tell me what's, we'll see it.
So we'll move it right after 664, site plan review. And this was working with the planner on this. We were thinking of it as a standalone ordinance, as a guideline, because that was the intent of it from the beginning. So 511, we'd hold it as a reserve so we don't have to change all the numbering all the way through.
Yes, 511.
Bit of housekeeping on that one. Did the page already go?
Goes to 89.
Thank you.
Goes to 528, so if we erased 511, we'd have to change it all the way to 28, drop that to 27. So we just have a reserved spot and if we have something additional, then we'll just move it into there.
Did you say 89?
For site plan review, yeah.
I got it, what?
Yeah.
So right where you see 664, site plan review, then we'll bring that, what used to be the 511, right underneath that. Adding the word commercial into that heading, under that heading subchapter, first, first sentence. And the only thing we're changing from there are the numbers. Every time we were erasing like 5.11.3, we're adding 664.723.3. So the definitions, I wanted to take the definitions out, put them into the definitions lines, a lot of them like decimal. I don't think we need a definition for decimal, but I'll leave it all in there for now to keep it as simple as practical. And hopefully next year when we have a contract planner.
Yes.
For a few hours a week, this would be a great project for them.
To, you know, we can pass it on to them, come across, review and go over and then make them go through and.
Can we back up on that just a bit?
Yeah.
So we're not proposing to take it out of this only ordinance this year?
No, we're going to put it in with the site plan review regs. This is what the planner had recommended. We kicked it around a few different times and it's going to be the best way to utilize it, that it's really only applying in the site plan review regs.
Okay, I appreciate it. Now can you take that out of this?
Yeah.
And move that over to that.
Yeah.
So one difference, one difference on the yellow is that it says on, on the yellow sheet.
The yellow, we're going to strike it all out, make the standalone document of it all.
Right, but I'm looking at this, where we would, this would be applicable for conditional uses as well. So we've kind of scrapped that idea and this.
Yeah, I think as you're looking at the.
Only site plan review.
Correct.
So subdivision, it wouldn't apply?
No, it was never really meant to be in the subdivision aspect. It was, it was for the conditional, uh, at the time we really only had conditional uses as a commercial projects.
So we couldn't, we, so on a conditional use permit, we wouldn't pull this thing into, into play?
Right, I think what we want to do is look at that land use chat and up some of those conditional uses into site plan regs. And the conditional uses next year as.
Right, right.
And again, we always, we get through town meeting June, July, August, take a break. All of a sudden we've got a lot of stuff in front of us and then it's.
And every year we say the same thing.
We're supposed to have this stuff up to the selectmen last week and, you know.
Right.
But I think we want to really take a look at that land use chat, expand it out into some more stuff and maybe bump some of those conditional uses.
And just suicide rate. I think that don't make a whole lot of sense.
I like leaving it in there, I mean, some, some of the things that we, you know, like the, the decimal levels, we deal with that more often than you think.
Yeah.
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 Yep, that's in here.
But it got confusing where we'd have a logger next to somebody's house and they would be complaining and bringing that decimal, uh, somebody's agricultural next to them, the smell of that was bringing it back in and.
Those are the ones, right, always. I think those are in there under the, um, sound exemptions and then they have like a time period you're allowed to.
Exactly.
4800.
Yeah.
And I kind of like that.
But I think next year we really want to look at that land use chat and see what others, because if it's not permitted, then it's prohibited. And see what type of other businesses the town really wants to start to attract, because obviously we've got a, more commercial than we've seen in a long time headed our way. And I know we've talked about it for a while, the 55 and older communities and something more based, we're, we're seeing the high end stuff and that's really not helping the residents to start talking 350, 400 for a 55 and older community residents. I think we really want to, and we talked about this last year.
We did.
Trying to find some area where we can look at 5, 10,000 acres per unit and getting some small single families, slab grade garage, small units.
Single four.
Single four, really meant for one or two people and something that you can make affordable and find some areas in districts in town that that's something we could find somebody to do. Because if we can't find a developer that's going to make money out of it, then we'll never get it either.
Right. And, and the other thing you watch is if it's 55, you want affordable houses, then you get the feds coming in.
For the money. Maybe that's why everyone's going 60 to and older now too.
I think so. I would say, different, different funding, but different ways, but those are all things.
But we see it quite often that there'll be, somebody's lived in town all their life with a huge farm and lots of acreage and.
I was talking to somebody last night who was in a farmhouse, it was 17 rooms.
Yeah, yeah.
And she's like.
They don't need it.
But the problem is at this point, you don't get any contractors or landowners want to do this because you can't do it right now.
You need three or five acres per unit. And really, if you're talking one or two elderly people, they're, they're not using that much. And we've been trying to look at a couple of old sand pits and gravel pits and something. But if it's any further away from Sanford than basically here, you go up H Road and that's too far, you never got to sell it. So you've really got to look at the large area across from the fairgrounds. We really missed that when that last subdivision.
Yeah.
That would have been a great spot. Uh, similar to the subdivision on Mason Road, those 11 lots sold pretty quickly, but yet up on Moose Pond, we still have 20 or 30 lots that haven't sold in 20 years. It's just, it's just.
All the, all the things that you have to consider is, you know, not only do I do my grocery shopping at Hamfords, but that's where I get my prescription, and the doctor's just around the corner.
I think it's where the ambulance comes and where the ambulance.
And where the ambulance go, but I mean, really, that's the, the, I think I'm the same token, that's why you see a lot of drugs in South Sanford rather than this end of Sanford. You know, there's a lot going on there.
But then they close their hospital, right?
Uh, Sanford, they have, they have emergency department.
Yeah.
And lots of ambulances that'll take you to Bitterford. So that's why I think South Sanford really is.
You're right on the highway.
You're right on the highway to get to Bitterford or York. And now that's why we, York Hospital has a satellite.
Yep, the one in Wels, we were by yesterday.
That's South Sanford still, yeah.
Yep, that was impressive.
And down in South Sanford also, there was so much of that, what was commercial and business that had gone out of this.
Exactly.
What are we going to do with the land out because nobody's interested in starting up the business?
Yep, yep.
Right, but we've got to just, you know.
We'll look at it.
We have to look at it. We have to be, I'm sure we're educated about it. It has to be affordable.
Hoping if the, we've made through the first step of the budget, the planner, the contract planner to help us weekly is still in the budget. And we've seen all the time, everything gets approved early on, but once they look at the tax rate and the increases, then usually you have to go back and look and stop cutting. So this would be a great things that we could see for future development and stat early on in July and have things ready October, November and not the.
Having extra meetings this time of year.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good neighbor?
I think so. I mean, I, I'm not going to hang us up on it, but I mean, I just do want to point out that the old definition of good neighbor design standards for proposed development states that shall apply all uses in all zoning districts. So we are changing it from all uses in all zoning districts to site plan review in all districts.
In commercial, really. And that was the intention when it first came in. I threw the proposed development a year afterwards or so, because once it got in, we had started applying to a lot of residential stuff and that wasn't the intention of the board. And then development got dragged into a little more broad and there are some exemptions in it, but.
I was kind of thinking about mineral extraction, because a lot of the time we do a conditional use permit for mineral extraction, but we do like to reference the decimal levels, things like that.
Yeah.
In the good neighbor policy.
Maybe we want to bring that up to site plan.
Could be.
You know, gravel extract. After some of the yards per year or something like that. We don't care about the small pits where it's, and we've had two of them where it's the local contractors bringing up themselves, their commercial operation. But then we have a large commercial operation that has multiple tractor trailer trucks bringing the stuff down to Boston every day. That's a little different.
They have their own crusher running.
Right.
Every single day.
Yeah.
It's on crew, where the guy going into his own.
And of course.
Pit is a different story.
You have that fine line between property owner rights and a butter rights. If the gravel pit was there before you owned, well, if the gravel pit's there after you own, there's two different levels.
And the scale of the.
And the scale of the operation.
Of the extraction.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea, because we do have a lot of different sized pits in town.
Yeah, yeah.
We kind of have one standard right now.
Well, that kind of went back to the 10, 10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, where we made the changes there before, you know, it kind of goes back.
And in a lot of the major ones, Netscape, Deepwater, I call them, we had put in that, yeah, we are at our request, we're count, we're asking for a report from your engineer that you're in compliance and they'll give us a, they'll be able to go out there and do field engineering, tell us how many yards they've moved and, and the condition of it, mostly for erosion control purposes and stuff like that, the state of the, the operation.
And that goes back to the question I brought up a while ago, assessing.
Yes, I guess.
The gravel, uh, that's being hauled out of town, putting a, a, a fee scheduled and I haven't, I said something upstairs about it, I haven't gotten the answer. Uh, who does that ordinance, does the planning board do it or does the selectmen?
Some sort of assessing, looking between assessing and, um, I think the first thing, see, has another town ever done that? Is it legal to do, is it similar to a, to a timber harvest, to a timber harvest?
I, I can say, I know, because I did some research on it when Dennis brought it up and other states have done. And most of Canada does it, provinces in Canada.
Well, it's a resource that.
And that's what it is. It's, it is a resource, once it's gone, it's gone.
Where they're lowering the value of the town.
They're taking the value away.
That's just what it is.
And it's, it's not that it's, this is one of those things where a small amount of money generates a large amount for the town. It can be as little as, you know, a half a cent, you know, per ton.
Oh, I'm going to lose a buck.
Easy math.
You know, easy math.
Right, right.
But, but you know what I mean? Yeah, or.
But something we hadn't, we hadn't thought of, similar to one of the operations in another town to the north, there's a big huge mountain, they've stripped it down to lower. So you were at 3, 4,000 yards, uh, 3, 4,000 acres.
Acres.
And now you've got a thousand acre. So you've lost assessed value too. And a lot of times we always had concerns about the truckload of trees leaving town constantly. Well, they will grow back, but the gravel's not going to.
And then plus the fact, not only are you losing value, 70% of our damage from road in this town, roads are from the big trucks.
They're operated by your own town, so.
Oh, yeah, that's.
The empty trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is, there are several levels of detrimental impact to the town. And then don't forget, we have owner's rights and we have to weigh those.
Oh, I appreciate that, but you can have a, a five acre pit running and it's one thing and you're just doing it for your own use.
Right.
Your own business. And then when you have a 30 acre pit open, uh, they're hauling a lot of material out there, hauling millions of yards out of that.
Right.
And your five acre pits are usually going from one side of town to another town, doing a septic here, foundation there.
Yeah.
I just think we, we, maybe like you say, after we get more in here with the planner or whatever, maybe we can talk to him about it and get his opinion and then maybe there's something that's left and I'm interested in, but it's.
I think it's going to take a lot of, the collaboration matters between upstairs and here and, and again, we've got to know what we're talking about.
Yeah, do what's best for the community.
What's best for the community, exactly, exactly. Back on track though?
2020?
Well, Kenny's absolutely right, you're losing the option of, oh, you're doing well.
That's bad.
Losing the option of talking about sound and if they have this under site plan review.
I think as a conditional use, you can bring up the conditions that you need to want to, set the regulations for it and stuff like that. Most of the gravel pits, I think we've got, we've got one more that needs to come into compliance with the 10,000 yards. And then look at this next year and see what we want to do. I think like we were saying, uh, under so many yards, conditional use, once you move that right, it's site plan.
It's site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. And especially if it's conditional use, if it's a, a not for sale type situation.
Yeah.
It's you own the gravel pit and you're using it for your own company. You're not selling it, there's no sign up from the arrows, any, you know, gravel for sale. No 18 minutes in the driveway only, okay?
Uh, number four was docks.
Okay, so I just want to go back to, to this one. Uh, except for the conversation we had, are we in agreement, this is fine to go as it is?
We'll hold it until public hearing, then we'll hold it if they add the public hearing.
After public hearing, we get together the next day and do any tweaking that needs to be done.
Or we'll vote that night after the public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
We'll vote now.
No, no, no. Public hearing hasn't taken place.
Right.
But as it stands, are we in agreement to go forward with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Docks, we have voted on this one here, this one was voted on back in December.
Yeah.
We actually were at a DEP training yesterday and we were on, we were the only community in the room that still had permitting for temporary docks. Uh, nobody else had permitting for it, so this is just coming into compliance, similar to with all the other towns. Uh, there's no way to regulate these, so only the tech, only the permanent ones would be. So temporary is already in there, turning the R into P's. And adding the word permanent in A, removing war. Striking out most of the verbiage. And then just B and C, the new B and C talks about the permanent stuff. And then just B and C, the new B and C talks about the permanent stuff. And this one here, like I said, we've already voted on it. But I guess we had it permitted twice in the heading and in the paragraph.
I think that's intended what we did.
I think as they called it yesterday, it was the Hammond lumber dock on wheels that you do, that we'll do.
Right. So it's the permanent, the temporary docks are...
And I think after we exclude that, then we can really look at the primitive ones that are left in all the...
Yeah.
But a temporary one...
Could stay on the shore.
No, they'd be fixed to the shore. That would be...
The way they lift them up like that.
The lift is...
Is that temporary or permanent?
That's permanent.
The fixture to the shore makes it permanent. You're also putting another structure in about 50 feet back, the big chunk of concrete that the...
Crank it in.
To crank it in or how they fix it to the shore.
So that would be considered a permanent.
That would be permanent, that'd be conditional use.
Do we have something that defines the difference between the docks and the order?
A is what I was going with and F, DEP verbiage.
Yeah, exactly. And the other thing, I'm forgetting any great pond, but they talked about any great pond, the definition of that is so broad that that is anything that leads to a great pond, you know, it's a...
Right.
It seems like when you some kind of blow, but somebody might...
Right, I mean, there's no...
Yeah.
I mean, it's not in the definitions. It's a simple word.
Right.
But I just, I would like to make it clear to applicants, sort of speak on what, what the difference between a permanent dock and a temporary dock is.
We don't have definitions.
As I say, it's a definition.
It is, yeah.
An under permanent?
Under, yeah.
Under piers.
Under piers.
Oh, oh, they got under D.
Yeah, but I know, I remember we've been through that before, under piers.
Structures which remain in or over the water for seven months or more in a period of 12 to 16 months.
Yes.
But when it comes down to structure, it's under D, right?
Well, you look at the definition of structure and I mean, a picnic table is a structure.
Right. But I think it's pretty, as they called it yesterday, the Hammond lumber, you know, you roll it out or you carry it out and, you know, you see, come to my house, you know, you see all the parts of the dock.
But you're saying the, even if they're like a concrete slab 10 feet back?
That your, the docks that raise out of the water, that's permanently affixed to that concrete block. You can't just tie those into a tree.
But the definition says it has to be in or over the water. And that's...
Are you talking about the concrete or the dock?
Concrete.
That would be out of the definition of probably structure.
Structure.
The DEP wouldn't give you the permit for that to fix that. Now occasionally people will have an old piece of concrete or a chunk of granite or there's something usable there.
Yeah.
And in the past that, they've gone through that, but that's conditional use through you guys.
Say, say they use their vehicle and then just tie it off to a tree. Is that something heard of or is that...
Is it fixed to the shoreline? Just dragging the whole thing out.
Well, just when we look at the definitions, I don't want to drag this out.
Yeah.
Structures which remain in or over the water. So it's like if the thing is up like this, it's not in or over the water anymore.
It can be over the water.
Well, it could be, but it ain't on.
But it still has to be affixed to the property.
It would still be fixed to the property.
It's the second part of them.
Yeah, the same, the same part.
But that's not in the definition.
Wait, it feels like there's a...
I guess just the word structure in the definition.
Jeff, you saw docks?
Yes.
Okay.
Temporary docks.
Temporary docks. Let's not strike stray from that. And if you had a dock that was on a lift, like...
It is secured, it is secured to a weight on shore.
On shore. But the dock itself did not necessarily clear the water. It could still be over the water.
It had to be at least 30 degrees.
Yep.
Okay. And depending on how far back that, whatever you want to call it was that you secured it to, depending on how far back that was, because you'd have to have one heck of a long apparatus to clear...
I haven't, I haven't found a way of securing a cantilever dock system.
Thank you for that word. I was looking for it.
That is not secured permanently to the shore as well as some type of permanent structure for a crane or a winch system further away.
Right.
But...
No, because of what I've seen, it's, it's not over the water as if you're walking on it over the water, but it's still over the water, that 30 degrees. Is that correct?
If it's any less than 30 degrees, it's, it's a major safety hazard for snowmobiles.
Right, right.
You know? We had a young kid killed 10 years ago, so the hip on them, how hard are you know?
These are all subset with the DEP.
Yep.
Yeah.
What are you talking about? So really referring, like Kenny said, to the DEP regulations, that was all right.
Just by kicking it back, you'll need that term as well too. And the DEP's broken up into multiple bureaus, land, water, air, and one of the NERPA guys that actually permitted one of those is now in the Shoreland Zoning Bureau. So now he sees the other side of it and clearly understands that it's destruction. No, you can't have it unless you have an existing one. Now, if you have an existing one, conditional use probably through you guys or it's an existing dock that you're pulling out and changing out or something like that, that opens the window for something.
If you're changing it out, it does open the window for...
Yep.
Coming back or coming to us for the first time.
So basically what we're doing here is we are doing away with the permitted use of temporary docks.
Temporary docks.
The verbiage was review. May need a permit, may not. You need a permit. And as we looked at it, every place on the, it said a dock, a temporary dock. Every camp on the water has two, three, four docks. They've got the thing that raises the dock up. They've got the three or four jet skis. They've got the floating raft. Floating raft is a conditional use through you guys as well too. They've got the flamingos that you blow up. It's just, there's no way to control it that we want to anyways. So temporary, we don't care.
The peacocks are the ones that I...
You do what you need to update with your temporary stuff, pull it all out and...
You know, I mean, I've seen peacocks bigger than this table.
Bigger than this room.
I haven't seen that one yet.
Those are flamingos.
You know, but I mean...
And any of those issues on the water anyway have nothing to do with us. It's all the potter and the fishers out on the water.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, you know. So...
I think it's mine myself.
So we had voted on this?
Yep.
And just as review, this will come up at public hearing and we vote and move forward either way, correct?
Yep.
Everybody, yes? Okay.
I got one more. Is there, Kenny, did you look at any verbiage, pulling the dock one back out?
I didn't put it away yet. Did you look at the verbiage through the Saco River Corps of Commission to see if there was any, anything that was pertinent to what we're doing here?
No, I didn't for temporary, but anybody in Saco...
Or what their definition of temporary versus permanent is, just under a little osippe. I was thinking of that.
Yeah, yeah. Say anybody in Saco River would have to go through Saco River DEP in the town. So at this point, they're still going through Saco River DEP in the town. And if anyone, you've got to take the most restrictive of all three, not the least restrictive. So if Saco River says you need to do it, then you need to do it. But I think Saco River is even okay on the temporaries.
I'd be interested to see that.
They, they've had a change of staff up there, so we've got a newer person up there and she seems very energized and a lot of stuff. We're seeing, we've never seen a lot of permits from them before, but now we're seeing it for generators and septics and they're making everyone go through permits for any small projects.
I see they're looking for a lot of amendments.
They always, who refers them, the applicant, does the town refer?
We do it.
Yeah, if you're in Saco, if it's a permitted use, they wouldn't even come to the town. So we wouldn't refer them to Saco River.
For dock.
Correct, yeah.
Temporary dock.
You know, there's, there's one other issue that, that is not addressed in this dock paperwork is we're getting more and more permanent, temporary docks that left permanently in the water and they're using bubblers around it to keep the ice off. You know, I learned that's not a bubbler. That's actually a propeller. I saw one yesterday. It's a small propeller in a cage that just creates a current. Looks like a bubbler though.
Yeah, I've seen them on one of Saco. That's the only place I've ever seen those.
We have, we have two that I know of on Great East. Both of them was installed by a local dock company.
Well, if it's in for more than seven months on the year, they're permanent. It becomes permanent.
So that would be a permanent, that would be a... Yeah, DEP told us yesterday, if you're on this snowmobile and you see them, let us know. We'll go take care of them.
Yeah.
Which I'm shocked because it's a lot to do with them, yeah.
DEPs spread so thin, but they are such a hazard. Someone, you know...
Gets decaf.
...forgets and someone's out on a sled and they're going along and all of a sudden something protruding and it's all, it's all over. And I frankly don't think that when those, are they aluminum, most of the temporary docks, aluminum or...
No, I see a lot of pressure treated though.
Well, no, 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 aluminum. I don't want pressure treated ones in the water, period. But, but the newer ones, yeah. Are the newer ones more like aluminum?
Yes.
Okay. You put those in the water and leave them there in the ice for a year and you're going to have kind of a mangly...
You're not going to have any dock if you leave a mangly dock. The ice get torn, they'll bend them around.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And that's what's nice about the aluminum. They're so lightweight, pick them up and move them. It's amazing what, 20 pieces of two by four and 15 pieces a deck and how, how heavy that is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
15 foot dock is less than 40 pounds.
Right. So, you know. Okay. More questions on this? We will be ready for the public hearing. Excellent. Okay. Ken?
I'm on Saco River's...
Okay, you're on Saco River. We'll take a Google break.
Uh, docks is a...
Right, short-term rentals?
Number five, short-term rentals. So as we've discussed, we've got a lot of complaints about these over the years. This probably isn't going to address half the complaints. It's more of the abuttes complaining of the noise and ruckus coming out of them. This is really going to address the safety concerns that most towns are having with these. So short-term rental in the language chat, it's R, so it would be a permit through us. Then we're just changing, because we've added the G in there, we're just changing the letters on everything else on the first page. We've changed this a little since you guys have seen it, changed it to 60 days.
Just had a thought.
Instead of 70.
Changed that in the definition, changed it in A.
Does it B change a little, Ken?
Yes, one short-term rental unit per lot. So then we don't have the house, the garage and the camp. There's not three short-term or two short-term or one lot at a time. It would be okay to have the owner in him short renting out something there too as well, but if you've got nobody maintaining over it, this is, more and more we're seeing it every day where towns are trying to regulate it. South Portland actually has a third party do all the permitting inspections because they can't handle it. So they've got a whole third party that just deals with it all on their own. I think we were hearing yesterday, Colorado Springs just banned them all together.
Yeah.
Not Colorado Springs, banned them all together.
Colorado Springs. They just put them all together and that's one person full-time.
A lot we were seeing was no campers on the site. I know when I was down to Key West, we were in the house. They were living in the camper outside. That's not a permitted use anyways. You'd have to have an acre and a half to have the camper or something like that. And if you feel permissible, then that's fine. Again, we were trying to keep this as minimal as possible, so it would go in. The fees, selectmen's going to set the fee for it. Who knows? They could set it at zero. The certificate of insurance, that's going to eliminate the ones that really aren't safe. Two, we'd address the 911 address that it's visible. We changed the, the property owner or his agent from 20 minutes to one hour. As long as really they're available by phone, especially for the abuttes or something like that, you know, the septic's bubbling out. He doesn't need to really run out. He's just going to make a phone call, so. One fire extinguisher per floor. Every bedroom's going to have a means of egress, code compliant smoke detectors, carbon monoxide. The plan, I thought this one was pretty excessive, four persons per bedroom. So it's a state-approved bedroom for the septics. And he thought if you had four bedrooms, it's going to be 16 people and well, yeah, but no. So I mean, that, I guess that's where the camp is, so.
Yeah. You know, and again, long before we ever had a house on the water, we would rent a place and daughter and son-in-law had one bedroom and so did the twin girls. They were six months old.
Yeah.
You know, that's four people. And that's it.
You're sleeping on the floor and they'll live in the room or whatever.
You know, well, at six months, they were in the porta cribs in the same room. But I mean, you know, it's, I think one of the things that they thought was very important to everybody is the permanent placement of a, your address is 123 Blueberry Lane, you know, so, oh, where are you? You know, I'm on such and such, no, light in a permanent place. You can see it. Your fire extinguisher's here. Phone number of this place is such and such, you know, that sort of thing.
Ken, I don't see anywhere in that about fire chief or fire marshal inspection.
That's going to be just a policy with the town. There was no reason really to put it as a regulation. I think it will do the enforcement and work on complaints and then fire department can work or we could or whoever. But as we've talked, they'll be the ones doing the inspections.
Yeah, the fire department will do the inspections and the town will issue the permits.
But he may say, hey, we're on calls. Can you run out and do them for us?
Right.
You know, it's going to be similar to Sanford implied, imposed sprinklers in all their apartments. They have hundreds of apartments and you couldn't go inspect every one. But when a crowd of people came in and said, there's no way I'm going to do this, and these other crowds say, I'm working on, I've got a company in a design, we're imposing it, you go to the crowd that's, that's telling you they're not going to put it in. You start with them and work from there. So it's going to be similar to this. It's, it'll be a learning curve this year. People will know, people go through the process. The legitimate ones already are paying room and meals tax. They probably already have updated their insurance company and have the policy. They're working with it. They have a state-approved septic. They may need to put smoke detectors in or egress window or something like that to make it safer. But I would say the legitimate ones are already complying with all of this, so.
It'll take a, I say a three-year curve.
Oh, as soon as somebody gets, is, has paid the fees, has the permits and has the inspections, they're going to tell us about every other one that doesn't.
Yeah.
Who would, who would ask the fire department to go and do this?
We'll get a call and just probably send them an email, their contact information or something like that.
So enforcement would be asking the fire department?
We'll, we'll touch base with the fire chief at the time and ask him, do you want us to give your cell phone number out or do you want us just to send you their contact information by email? And then he can set up his time and inspections where he's, has a full-time job and so he'll have specific days. And it may be a rotating shift that he's on or something. I'm not sure. So we'll just put, give... sure, so we'll just put, give him their contact numbers first if it gets approved. Then we'll just work with him and see how he wants to deal with it.
I guess my, my issue is with you as code enforcement, I see no issue. With Ricky as fire chief, I see no issue, but.
Things change.
Things change, as everybody knows, and to leave it a verbal thing, I mean, I could take your job tomorrow and change everything.
But if you were smart, you would delegate. And if you could delegate inspections to somebody else, you would delegate.
Oh yeah.
Versus saying.
Ken personally was.
Versus saying, I really wanna do 100 inspections, I gotta fail, so that's 200 to 300 inspections and keep going back to work through. The first is gonna be social cognitive analysis, you're gonna need this, what about that? And that'll be up to him to say, yeah, I'm confident that we've got battery ones this year, we're gonna get the hard wires in next years, and that's gonna be him, or he may say, you know, no, get this in, you can't rent it out until we have, you've got no carbon monoxide detectors in here.
So your suggestion is, and I'm not really disagreeing, is hopefully get this in place and get it started and get it out there and see how it goes.
We may find out there's only one in town.
Right.
There's 75 that are on Airbnb, may all disappear and they may not want to rent them out because they've talked to their insurance company and it's a lot of money to have insurance to cover this.
Right, yeah.
So they need them to one.
They're on great lists today.
As long as they're safe, that's all we care about.
Just like everything else.
But don't forget this.
We address it and the things are original, we change it when the time comes.
Don't, don't forget the issue is, you rent your place out, there are any one of these nice people renting their place out. And it makes money, so now you're in business, it pays your taxes and you don't have a carbon monoxide.
No, I'm, I'd be pretty safe.
Somebody, somebody dies, or two somebodies die. Well, they don't have a whole lot of money, well, guess who does? They go right to the town, how could you let them run a business without proper?
You could've saved me.
You could've saved this.
Well, I appreciate that, that's why I wanted to.
This is not trying to take people's rights from them like any such, this is, you know, we can tell you horror stories of where things like this have happened and not only have smart lawyers and I believe watching TV, every lawyer out there who sees an accident knows how to run quickly, they could have went to Home Depot because it wasn't the right insulation, you know, it wasn't fire retardant. So not only did, why did the code enforcement officer let this happen, why did Home Depot and sue them all?
That killed 100 people.
It killed 100 people.
I mean, the chief, when he was here, was telling inspection didn't stamp it and he went down to the basement and was petitioned off into 11 rooms that were renting out. People wanted me to room in the basement, knowing the way out of it was going up to stay away from the house.
So talking with the planner, he was concerned that we didn't address rooms, breaking into rooms, this is a house only, so bed and breakfast really isn't a permitted use, single, and my thoughts, one step at a time, let's look at the houses, most people are renting out the whole house, we do have some people renting out rooms, but they've come in and it's a duplex, they're doing a two-family out of it, they're not really, I mean, if you're renting a room out and it's not on Craigslist or Airbnb and it's not a commercial operation, usually the concern is that you're transient, you're not familiar with the environment, you're here for five days, six days, seven days, the first day you're not sure. And that, one of my main concerns is carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. Mostly, no on the way out, well, knowing your, knowing your address, we're in Airbnb twice a month or so, up on the Canadian border, and last time we were up there was the first time I've ever seen a sticker on the cabinet, the business name, the street address, your 911, the Cal information for local fire, local, first time I've ever seen that. Most times, I don't know the address where we're staying, we just know it's the yellow place after the victory.
At the end of the pine tree road?
We, we talked about having a Realtor command.
I'm gonna tell him for the public hearing, friends are gonna touch base with him.
Nice.
Because he's the one that does a lot of them.
Yeah.
And what's really changed this whole atmosphere rentals was the internet.
Yeah.
You've eliminated, because the Realtor is the middleman, that's probably the one worth suing the most.
Right.
Because he was the one that rented, you could've, again, you could've, you should've.
Yeah, maybe there's a situation that was talked about yesterday, it was not actually for a, a short-term rental, but it was a house, very tall, had a third floor, had a window that was blocked at Evers, but even if it had been, there was no place for the person to go. And because of where it was built, which I could see on any of our legs, there was no room for a fire truck to go down on either side or go over it to get to that lovely third floor room with a view, and no place for that person to go. You know, those kinds of things, you don't want to have happen.
And you, you said you covered, Ken, that we change the time to one hour?
Yeah, yeah, that seemed much more than that.
Yeah, I agree.
The problem is we go, as we push into March, selectmen want the warrant, the warrant, all this information, a lot of times we try to have several informationals, we get changes and things like that, we're just trying to predict any changes from the public and have them addressed for the public hearing.
My whole issue with this short-term rental was, as I said from the very beginning, to keep it short.
Simple.
Simple, and, and I think it'd be a lot more powerful for people to agree.
Just like any would, Vince.
Yeah.
I think if you guys are in acceptance with all five, just for the record, I'd take a vote to move them forward to a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to move the fire department, we covered tonight, to a public hearing on, is it March 12th? At 6:00 PM, is that it?
That's it.
Second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I would like to still mention that I'd like to see in this one, short-term rentals, the, just a note that says, no fireworks are permitted at rental properties, I do feel like that's still a good thing to have in here, and I'd like to put it out there to the board anyway, no fireworks permitted at rental properties.
We did talk about that at length. We did.
We did, we did discuss it.
Did it come up in the, in your?
I think it worked up, we thought it was unenforceable and.
It, it came up and it came up with the fire marshal, and like he said, somebody sets off a firework, which I shouldn't be doing, and it's 10 o'clock at night, you're not gonna call code enforcement at 10 o'clock at night, so you're gonna call the sheriff's department, and by the time he gets here, it's gone. I think your neighbors are a greater, have a greater power in themselves to regulate this. The one thing I will say, because I scared the daylights out of me, these lanterns that you set a fire and they float up, it's even illegal to own those in the state of Maine. So, you know, if you see those, I really would, you know.
I, I think with the fireworks, the avenue to go, because it's phosphorus.
Yeah.
We're concerned about.
It's all the metals that make the gold.
But phosphorus is the main reason why.
The number of fires that are caused every year by those things landing on people's roofs, asphalt shingles are flammable.
Yeah, but the short-term rentals are on the water, they're going out on the lake, I don't think we see a lot of fires.
Well, it's, it's a phosphorus level.
And to me, that would be education from the lake associations to the property owners to, to advise these people.
That's why.
That's one of the larger pollutants in the lakes.
Yeah, and I think that's where the neighbors, i.e. the associations, can really kind of pull together.
Educate versus regulate.
And educate, very good. Educate versus regulate and it's like, you know, you see your next door neighbor, nice guy, nice family, oh, they're renting, hey, we, no.
I mean, that's the main reason they have lake associations, really, is to.
They actually have them.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, I, I will throw this out, I know, even, even my lake association, you know, somebody always puts on a show and it's getting.
That guy, that guy.
You know him?
That guy, every lake has that guy.
Every year, and that guy always puts on a great, got down a good show.
You gotta spend at least three, four, five grand.
Well, I wouldn't say that guy does that, but I'd be willing to say.
My guy does that.
Does he?
Yeah.
No, my guy probably, you know, five or $600, but.
I think you put that easy and have the shopping cart.
And then you're gonna put it in your car, and, oh, don't forget to stop and get a five gallon thing of gasoline for the boat on the way home, but.
Get a pack of cigarettes.
Right, but, you know, it's, it comes to the association, and I know our lake association talked about fireworks last year, and we didn't really hit it past the phosphorus and the pollutants, but for crying out loud, these things are going up at 11, 12 o'clock at night, the dogs start barking, babies waking up, I mean, it's like, please, consideration, you know? And it's not as if we can't see fireworks go 11 miles down the road.
If it gets into the ordinance this year and we continue to see it as an issue and we're seeing the lake associations pushing out of, it's nothing to throw it in later.
Right.
But I think let's see if we can get it in or how much resistance and how much.
A step at a time.
Yep.
Seems like a simple safeguard for the landowner, that the owner of the rental property would like that, and the insurance company would like that, and the town would like that.
The neighbors would like that.
You know, I mean, it seems like it's a beneficial thing to do.
And just a nice reminder for people coming out of town and I, and I would be thinking about it.
Right, and I, I feel like the major issue that everyone stated with the enforcement, but I feel like if we just put it into order, it's still gonna reduce the number of fireworks we see, even if we're not trying to actively go out there and find the person.
So, so if, if that were added, would you wanna see it under?
I would think additional requirements number eight.
Just make it number eight, just a one-line thing?
I would say it's unenforceable, if it's unenforceable, don't put it in the ordinance this year, write it out a year and see, see what we get.
I'd say let the, to me, let the lake associations deal with it. They do have an awful lot of influence on that for rental properties.
And one of them, they're more than we do, so then, yeah.
Well, that would give them some vacuum, they're saying we'd like to do this, they say it's in the zoning ordinance, you know, I, I don't know, I.
And these people come in and go, it's not like it's.
Right, these people aren't ones that live on the lake year-round and care about the quality of the water and probably aren't educated to know what they're actually doing to begin with when they are putting these metals in the lake, so, I don't know, I still feel like it's something I'd like to see, but I'm not gonna stop our progress tonight on it, but I think I'll bring it up at the public hearing and see if anybody from the public has any comments about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We see all sides.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that, that's a positive for you, for you? Nobody else is objecting? Just that's, that's.
Oh, I'm fine with bringing it to public hearing.
Yeah, that's what we do.
That's why we have public hearings.
That's exactly why we have them, so, and that all goes back to whatever's in here, goes to the municipality, the municipality and the citizens too. Hold on, in the end, okay?
Madam, do you have any other motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Yes, we do, thank you, Jim. Would you restate our motion, please? Thank you, Christina.
Yeah, the motion that you'd like Dennis.
Dennis.
Oh, Dennis moved the, um, the changes to the public hearing.
Okay, any further discussion on any of those? All in favor? Post?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saco River, temporary docks is all you can have, is all they have on their website, no permanent docks allowed.
They have the definition, I bring them, public services state, yeah, okay.
That's all I've got.
That's all we've got. Okay.
You'll have solar for informational at your next meeting?
Yeah.
What's your next Thursday?
Which is next Thursday. Public hearing in Fairgrounds, well, maybe back up the 5th, solar.
Fifth, solar.
You got a spreadsheet, huh?
Yeah.
That Saturday would be the subdivision.
Subdivision, South March.
Which I'm thinking you're really just looking at the.
We've got a road, road two, the, the new road.
Yeah, so with snow on the ground.
With snow on the ground, I mean, we may not have to, but, you know, and that is a public meeting.
Yep.
So, I think everybody's familiar enough with the first side, and, and please, and I don't wanna drink things, if there's more snow, planning board has a right to cancel at any time, but if we do that, we will try to make that decision.
You said by 4 o'clock on Friday. Posted on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, page.
So, Thursday, the piss on Thursday.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we're just limiting the, to the solar event.
To the solar.
I'm not in that, none of it, so we'll keep it seconded.
Yeah.
Martel on the 7th, Fairgrounds and public hearing for the zoning on the 12th, that's a Thursday. Grand Rose on the 14th, sidewalk, that's Saturday. I think that's all we have, that's Saturday.
Eleven, at 11, me here.
You may want to bring the solar and have the solar, if you can do that, that 14th or extend it back out, sidewalk for the solar on the same day.
Yeah, I think that is a good idea.
On the 14th.
On the 14th.
I thought we had said that. But we talked about it.
We talked about it, but let's do it that day.
We didn't schedule sidewalks, we haven't actually had them seen or seen, we haven't had them at the table yet, so.
Right, we have their bounds, but I, I think, I think if we do it and we post it now, solar in our timelines.
Additional meeting, it's not being filmed.
Planning board, public hearing?
Let's use it, yeah.
Not being filmed?
No, that's sidewalk.
Oh, no, 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 the public hearing at 6, the meeting at 7 on Thursday, that's where you have a meeting, that is, but that is an additional, we meet on the 1st and 3rd, that's, we've got.
That's the first, the first one in March.
The first one in March is March 5th.
Yeah.
And we have the planning board, public hearing at 6?
At 6, and then we have a, a meeting on the 19th, which is going to be the Martel preliminary plan.
Fairgrounds at 7 roughly.
Yeah. And we will be having a workshop on the 25th and the 11th. What I'd like to do, I know it's a lot of meetings at this time, but I have been trying to get in touch with the people in the South Stanford Solar Array, which I've just learned is the largest airport solar array right now in New England, and I would just like to get information from him, a little more for us to know, you know, the, the balance pitfalls and positives of this solar farm. Most information you get right now is in the form of infomercial. There was some conversation that came up from D E P that was, I thought, a little heartening, and that when you look at disturbances of land, you look at the mechanics, you know, and say this, these are 15, as, as we've read, they're 15 feet out the ground, but say that those posts are eight by eight, or something like that, they go down into bedrock, is what they've said and what they gave us, but they're disturbed.
They would be pouring cement.
Usually, a lot of them use those precast blocks and set those down.
Yeah, yeah, read, read their things.
What do they say, set in bedrock?
Setting bedrock, yeah. And, and it's just that dirt, that would be, that's a lot, you know.
And the first question with this to me would be, are they actually implementing this project or are they just getting permits, approval and selling the permits? Are they actually the ones doing the work and maintaining and going to hold it for 20 years? Now, this is gonna be similar to the cell phone towers we dealt with 25 years ago, everyone hated them, they were ugly, who's gonna take them down, what would they do? Now when we permit it, it's like, who's the carrier?
Yeah, which is my carrier on that cell phone tower, you know.
And there's, my coverage is gonna be there and.
And those will clean it up. And they should clean it up.
Well, that's the other thing we want.
Especially on the solar, are we going to bond this? So it's going to be, it'd be great to have the guy from Sanford.
From Sanford to come in.
And do a workshop on it.
Yes, so we get the information because, you know, maybe as we do with, you know, grant, with, um, gravel pits, you know, revegetation, we want X amount of dollars to make sure it's done. Are we going to...
An escrow.
An escrow or...
We usually use a lot of lines of credit.
Oh, LC, that works.
That 06, 09 crash, banks disappeared quick, the paper was useless.
Well, let's not talk about stock market today.
Yeah, it's, um, to me, it's escrow.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the money, we'll make interest and we'll tell you what your interest is.
Right, right, but so that we can clean up, you know, the money will be there for the cleanup and revegetation. And the other thing that just sort of came to my mind is now that we're having such a problem getting rid of our trash and refuse and...
That's paper and plastic.
Yeah.
Get rid of paper and plastic.
You can't get rid of any of this stuff. Where's the, the actual panel come off?
What's in the panel?
Well, that's what I want to know.
That's what I was going to say, like the...
What's in the panel, you know?
If they could give us the constituents of the panels and maybe like the strength rating, like if we got quarter size hail, other guarantee, that things are going to be secure or...
Right.
And then how often are these things, because it said they'd only check on them periodically and...
But now they're internet with the internet and the internet will tell you panel 73 is at 47% rating, you've got a problem, you go out there and there's a dead bird stuck to it or something. And even on the homeowner panels that you have on your house, your iPhone's going to send you an email when you've got a low panel rating.
Right.
So you don't need to, you're putting a fence around the place like a prison and keeping people out and just mowing the lawn, so...
Yeah.
But constituents of the things and, and...
The big thing Sanford pushed was bees.
Yeah.
Getting bees to add in there.
You know, which honeybees back in, you know, I mean, bee population is so...
I'd love to see like if we got one of these older, one of the first projects that went in and maybe we could get, I mean, I know this is maybe ideological, but...
That's okay, come on.
It'd be great to see a soil test to see if these things actually do dissipate their essence over time and if that's going to then be in the vegetation around these things after 20, 30 years, 40 years, what is the life of the project and what are the soil conditions going to be like at the end of it?
The greatest place for these places are municipal transfer station camps.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, they're proposing here an old agricultural field.
Yeah, yeah, so it's probably got some chemicals in the ground.
True, but it's a nice piece of lake.
It is.
It is, yeah.
So...
But then we do not say they still be there.
Where's it going to go? But I mean, you can always look at 25 acres, two acres per houses, 12 acres, six acres per house and, you know, and you could have five, you could have two sweet places stuck in there too.
I would let you all know we're talking about a site on H Road, so, um, it's in general.
So that's the first one.
That's the first one, we have a second one.
What day is that, the 5th or the 18th?
That will do.
That we're going to see.
Oh, I have to, I can't, it would be... I...
I can make a copy for it.
Yeah, I had to copy share with running around.
So the fifth was solar, the seventh was sidewalk, Young's.
Yeah.
The 12th was public hearing, zoning, fairgrounds, parking lot, parking expansion, 14th Grammy Rose sidewalk, 19th Young's Bridge, I think is always seen on that, but at that time, well, we may be bringing some of that old business back up and it might be nice to get rid of some of that stuff.
Right, we have to.
Solar shouldn't be, they're doing this everywhere, so...
Pretty straightforward.
And I think, I was quite pleased to see that they seem to have taken the initiative, they've gone to DEP, they've gone to the state, they've done the myriad of things that they have to do, you know, which doesn't mean there isn't work for them to do. I am more concerned that we'll bring up at a later meeting on the fairground, which you brought up at the last meeting.
Absolutely, I'll bring that up again.
One, one permit or two.
Yeah.
That was Gavin's big thing.
It's a gravel extraction.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see two permits just because it's going to...
That's why I want two permits.
Let's just, they would simplify it so much.
I think so.
We get the gravel extraction.
If they told us we're building a parking lot, we're going to move a million gravel, 1 million yards June or July, it's really a parking lot, but where it's a gravel pit until...
Extraction pit, yeah.
And if all of a sudden the economy, it could be 20 if the economy taxes, it could be two years if all of a sudden a big project goes across the street that needs a million yards.
Right.
So without knowing a date, I think you're right on that one.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I mean, the question I had was, Joe wasn't going to talk to the fairgrounds and probably come back and reply with two permits.
Yeah, to keep the planner simpler.
It isn't like...
And I pushed, and they were talking, we're going to, we're going to dig it out, and then for what? To park.
Yeah.
And we talked...
Now, why are we digging it out?
Well, it will be great to get the parking lot over 109.
Oh, I think it's a good, it's a fine use, but I'm also curious about the, um, the lot lines, the sidewalk lines and how close they're rubbing and excavating to the lot lines, because they're not supposed to excavate within 100 feet.
For a gravel pit.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
But if it's a parking lot...
It is mineral extraction, whether or not it's a gravel pit is up for debate, but it is a mineral extraction operation and they shouldn't be extracting material with 100 feet.
But they could for a parking lot.
So...
But they have to maybe, I don't know, I'm just...
So I mean, do we give them one, you have gravel permit to do what you're doing and come back to us when you want to make the parking lot, when you're done?
But then they have to go back and dig up the rest of the slopes.
And then they have to go back and dig out the rest of the slopes to put the parking lot in. It's kind of a catch 22.
It is, it's a tough one.
It really is a tough one.
Well, I don't see why they need to dig out the slopes so aggressively, you know? So, but this isn't necessarily the time to, but I think if you thoroughly...
The area shrunk quite a bit originally. If you took 100 feet out of that, that's probably almost two, the row in the road and almost another half of another row.
Right, of parking.
When you think about Scott McCloud's property.
He's on the other side of the street.
Doesn't he have a strip on that side of the street? It's like this weird little strip.
I don't know, but it sounded the other night he was inviting stormwater onto his property.
Right, right.
It's true, it's not...
I know.
Yeah, but he's on the opposite side.
Well, it's definitely potentially within 100 feet of the exploration.
Yeah, he's on the downhill side, it'd be only the uphill side people that matter. And we'll see if they show up in public hearing.
Yeah.
It's all up to them.
Yeah, it is, it's up to them.
Yeah, if they're not complying, it's after that.
But I can, I can, I can see, you know, exactly what you're saying.
Well, pretty much every mineral extraction we've looked at, DEP requires that they don't extract within 100 feet of the property.
Is that DEP or just that town rings?
That's DEP.
Over, on the larger ones, but that would become the smaller ones, is it?
So what, but is it a larger ones or the smaller ones? I mean, there's a fair amount of material in there, so once again, we have that.
But they'll, they will be looking at if, as long as you revegetate and then you're exempting roads and stockpiles too for the acreage that's open, they consider it open. As long as you revegetate it, they're not going to consider it open. So this wouldn't go under their, their...
But again, I think it was for neighboring groundwater.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not supposed to be mining out right that close to the neighbor property because who knows, you know, the groundwater.
We went out there.
Well, I think it's something we've seen.
When we did this one, we did this...
It was covered with ice when we went out there, that's, it was...
They were loading 18 wheeler with material.
When we were there, yeah.
DEP didn't consider that a gravel extraction.
No.
And we moved close to 60,000 yards out of there. And they gave us a permit by rule to do what we had to do.
Oh, okay.
And...
60,000, what we're talking? Well, they're supposed to come back with a number of how many yards too.
Yeah, we're talking more than 600,000 for this one, so...
Let's see what they bring us back.
I don't know if it's going to be as, it's long, but there's not as much of a hill as we usually see in some of these, like Hebo Highville, that was a huge bank there and...
But what I'm saying is, it could be awful a thing that it's not a gravel pit. We're removing this to build a parking lot.
But they always do something with the property after they've, whether it's a lawn, whether it's a subdivision.
Well, I appreciate that.
You know what I mean, they always do something with it, so...
But if it's a lawn, we don't care, if you're packing 459 cars on it, that's changed a lot.
Right, but I'm saying they always do something with it and we always go through the process for mineral extraction first. Something always happens with the property when they're done with the mineral extraction, so it's...
But they came to us first for parking lot.
They were removing the gravel.
And they were going to remove gravel to build a parking lot.
And campground.
And a campground, yeah.
Yeah, we weeded up the campground.
So, but I think what's very good is we did ask to see the principals here.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, hopefully get all these questions answered.
Right, and we asked the principal, you know, rather than just speaking with Joe, we talked to the principal.
Right, it's hard because there's a lot of, a lot of people involved.
Yeah, it's a lot of finite things.
And owner is the fairgrounds or the agricultural association. 13th Street's the...
13th Street is the business, which is a business.
Yeah, so they're the ones that are going to have a huge impact on the, to show.
Yeah.
So we've got our dates.
We have our dates, everybody?
For the rest week, then we'll know what the second includes.
Yeah, exactly.
And the third week.
All right. Any other business to come before the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a, uh, it was a workshop, Jim and I met the other day, Wednesday.
Yeah.
It went over some stuff, I went over with Jim, the stuff that he had missed at the previous meeting.
Okay.
And then we started looking at our districts, the way they're set up and our zoning maps. And I just want to put out there that there's, we know there's quite a few problems with our maps already and I really think we need to look at some of these districts. We have our commercial districts that are very limited in the town and we have more and more commercial businesses coming in all the time that we're allowing, in transition, extensions or rural districts or whatever. I just think we need to, when we get this other stuff behind us, I think we need to start looking at some of that, update the stuff. You want to say anything about that, Jim?
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. Looking at the project that we have down the street with the dog refuge, with some of the setbacks and the, I think, I think that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be an issue. That stuff, it needs to be addressed and it needs to come in front of this committee for approval, like any other project, shouldn't it? A lot of these, a lot of this mapping is, is very duplicate. Commercial, commercial A, B and C, that if you look at your paperwork and get out through them, what's the difference? The difference is two acre lots, 250 foot front end on it, two acre lots. So three acre lots with 300 foot front end, that's the only difference.
Well, let me read you the three commercial districts out of the zoning ordinance, because they're in different areas, they're designed for different reasons. Commercial A is your service business district designed to allow service tourist oriented, small commercial businesses. Commercial B is low water impact, so it's designed to service the lake's numerous summer residents. District will also be protected with additional environmental safeguards related to water uses and purpose services and phosphorus control measures. And commercial C is designed to allow light commercial industry usage. So very similar to A, but B is different, I mean, they do have differences in here.
In the town of Acton, we put in our commercial businesses in the, uh, different zones, not staying in commercial zones. You take, you take a look at the commercial zones, the people in the commercial zones have to meet all the requirements for commercial A, like I'm in, but if...
But they're not in commercial and they have to meet different requirements.
But it's discriminated between the people. A lot of this, a lot of this comes to this committee anyhow. Why should we have all these different zones and everything when it comes through this committee to make a decision on where it's going? That's why both, you know, that's why we think that we need to set up and simplify our, our maps for the taxpayers as well as us here in the Planning Board, because there's so many different things that we're running into that we're trying to make, we're trying to make changes, like with this project over here. So the building, the maintenance shop is in the rural town section. What's the problem, you know? Just because, I know it says, I know it says it's 50 feet, it's 50 feet you can go into it, but, you know, a lot of this stuff is so obsolete and outdated that it needs to be taken a look at and, and dealt with.
And that's why we're hoping to have a professional planner be able to work as a consultant three, four hours a week if we get that approved through the budget. The ordinance was a boilerplate from regional planning in 1974. It's been touched by a person on the board every year since with, um, passion as a local person or however like that, versus actually taking a look at professionally. I know Southern Maine Regional did the mapping and stuff like that, broken into multiple zones. One GP zone was much easier than six or seven commercials and several others as far as us for regulating, but on the other hand, you do want to have some commercial in some area and rural characteristics in the other. Acton's have, there's no downtown, there's no village. And 109 is never going to be a village zone because you're doing 50, 55 miles an hour. There really isn't anything there, so it's a...
Commercial Zone A is the left-hand side of Route 109, the Wildwood Lee side where my building is. The biggest commercial entity in the town is Apple Valley Gentry and that's in a mixed use district. Now, if you're going to have these commercial zones, you've got to put these businesses where the commercial zones are.
On one side of the zone, splits down the road. I think one of the things is, it's not, it's not a discussion for tonight, but we do have to look at it. Some of the things are simply updated, okay, and we know we have to face that. I mean, if you're in this commercial zone or you want to do this, you have to tie into the town sewer and water. Well, we don't have town sewer and water, so that does not belong in other parts at all.
Right, oh, that's a little...
We have to do some house cleaning as well, yeah, there's always that to do and...
And all these commercial zones that were put in here were put in there because that's where the existing businesses were.
Were, that's where the existing buildings were at that time.
Well, it was addressed onto Route 109.
Right, exactly, so it is something we have to look at. It's not, I'm glad to see there's interest in bringing it up and we, we know we have a lot of work in front of us. We've got three very big, four very big projects ahead of us and we don't keep pushing things off, but, you know, it's kind of like the old thing my grandfather used to say to me. How do you eat a frog? One bite at a time, okay, we do one thing at a time, okay? And we do it that way.
Well, my parents, when I grew up, you took the whole thing because my brothers and stuff.
They have, they only took one bite, you walked the rest of it.
There you go. We do have some correspondence that will go into our Young's Ridge Road file. Anybody to see in that file when Young's Ridge Road comes to, to... And, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor, any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.